Good evening, it is 7:02 and I'm called to meeting quarter. Please rise for the Flint of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome to our April 24th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Was it possible for someone to shut that door on the left? Thank you. So tonight we have two topics that I'm kind of excited about. Parent Involvement Report, I did just want to clarify before we get started, Dr. Beazer, this will now be an annual report, which is part of our board policy.
Yes, it will be.
Do you anticipate this will be the timeframe each year?
I would think so because it's the end of the year, so then we can report out on things that, you know, occurred and kind of reflect back on what the survey data showed. And, you know, I mean, if we had the new survey data, that would be great, but we don't do it until toward the end of May, you know, we give it out to parents, so.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Beazer.
Thank you. So as you indicated, Mrs. Lynn, we do have a parent involvement report this evening, and we're delighted that several principals are going to be part of this presentation. And I know that Mrs. Kreuz from Metalside is going to kick this off. So, do you want to just take it?
Absolutely, thank you. We're happy to be here today. Before I start, let me introduce some of my colleagues who will be presenting with me. Up front, we have Rose Marzano from Live Oaks, Joat Casella from Orange Avenue, and I'm going to jump over you one second, and Cliff Dudley from Orchard Hills. And then we also have Paul Cabana, who's joining us from the middle school, West Shore, and Mr. Thompson, who's joining us from Jonathan Law. It really is our pleasure to talk to you tonight about parent involvement, and we really want to talk about it on two levels. The first level being why it's so important to us, why we spend so much of our time as individuals, as schools, but also as teams with our teachers and our faculties. So we want to talk about why we believe that's important. And then the second piece is to really talk about the different ways that we all collectively, across all of our levels, involve parents in the work that we do. And then how we also might differentiate that back on the levels as well, and what that looks like. So I know that we shared with you an article that talked a little bit about the importance of parent involvement, and I just think it's necessary to really highlight what some of the benefits are for children whose parents are consistently involved within our school system. We know that students with involved parents are more likely to earn higher grades, enroll in higher level classes, be promoted from one grade to the other, attend school regularly, have better social skills, and graduate and go on to post-secondary education. That's what the research tells us. But we know also that kids who have parents who are involved have more experiences, more positive experiences, as we have more positive partnerships with parents, and are more involved in so many ways, both within the school day and beyond the school day as well. So one of the things that we do in Milford, which is consistent across the state, is we do an annual survey. Because at some point, we have to sit down and we have to say, okay, so we want parents to be involved, we want partnerships, but how is it that we determine where we want to set our goals for those partnerships and what they look like? So starting in the spring of 2012, we initiated a general survey that went out to all of our parents. The first year we did it was a much bigger survey than the subsequent years, because we wanted to get more comprehensive data. So every spring, we surveyed, and then we come together to look at the results. Before I go on to talk about how, as a school-based team, we look at that though, I want to pass this over for a second to Dr. Dudley to talk a little bit about the state and their role in the survey process.
Thank you. When we talk about parent involvement, everybody always says, "Parent involvement is a wonderful thing," and we all have maybe past ideas of what parent involvement was, is, will be. And one of the things that we really wanted is meaningful parent involvement, cohesive parent involvement across all the schools, vertical as well as horizontal. And it's not just a Milford thing. In fact, the importance of it is to reach the point that the state has formed the Commissioner's Roundtable to look specifically at best practices for impacting parental involvement in our schools. And if you bear with me, I just want to read one little part from a meeting that we just had last week. One of the goals from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Review and recommend effective practices to increase school and district capacity to develop successful partnerships and families' capability to support their children's education and determine the feasibility of carrying out those practices in Connecticut. So it's a two-way thing, not just what are we doing about parent involvement, but how do we empower parents? Excuse me, how do we empower parents to advocate for their kids and become allies in the partnership to help their kids succeed?
Thank you. So the big question really is, we give the survey, we collect back the data, and then what do we do with the data? Because it's real easy to kind of look through and say, okay, this is this information, that's that, what does it tell us? So what we do is we begin by looking for trends that go across the district, that go across levels, and then we look for trends within our building, and then we start to set goals based on that information. So rather than kind of talk about it theoretically, what I wanted to do was kind of take you through so you could see how those four areas are connected. So, oh, we get the data back in the spring, we begin to look at the data, and then we sit down with our skip teams, our school continuous-based improvement teams, and break down exactly what it is that we want to work on for the year. We begin actually by looking at the board goal. And so here's our board goal connected with our parent involvement. That parents', community, and business relationships will be built and supported, recognizing that they contribute to the increased learning for all students. So that's where we start. We then look at the data as a team, and we say, okay, so based on what we're hearing from our parents, what do we want our focus to be on for the year? So for example, we might see that when it comes to parents understanding how to support their children's learning at home, that might have a stronger, a higher number of strongly disagree than maybe some of the other areas. So if we found that looking at the data, we might set a goal that says, we want to really look in and focus on, how can we help parents support the learning of the children? How can we involve them in the process? How can we involve them in understanding the standards that we're working on, academic and social-emotional, so that they're in a partnership with us with the support that they're giving their children at home? So that might be a school goal that we set. We then drill down further. So as an administrator, I set a goal also around parent involvement. So again, going from the board goal to our school goal based on the survey data, a goal that I might set as an administrator would be that I want to increase opportunities for parents to come in during the day beyond PTA functions that really help to highlight the learning that is going on. We'll talk about this more in a minute, but for example, we want to shift in all of our schools to more of a relationship and involvement back and forth, and less of a just straight communication. So our goal as an administrator might be that we really want to know, be able to help parents understand how to support and extend the learning at home. We then drill down even further and look then at the teacher's goals. Now, often when we talk about teacher's goals, we talk about percentages and scores and all of those pieces. When it comes to involving parents and looking at our parent stakeholder goal, it's really about setting an action step that will support the bigger goal that we set as a school team. So in this case, a teacher goal that's connected might be, in their weekly newsletter, to have a highlight of table talk, for example, that will focus on a standard of goal being taught within the classroom. So that here's what we're working on in the classroom, here's a conversation that you can have at home that will directly align with the opportunities that we're providing in the school. So in this way, again, we're going from the district, the big picture, to the school-based goal, to the administrator and the teacher goals, with the idea that as we're all working collectively together, what we're focused on grows, and ultimately, we will be impacting and helping parents support the learning of the children at home. So when we look across, that's just kind of an example of one way that it might play out within a school, and it will play out within different schools in different ways. However, what's really interesting in looking at the survey data, in looking at all of the goals across all of our schools, we know that there are actually consistent priorities and trends. The first is really this big movement away from communication to involvement. Again, if we think about kind of the old model, even open houses, parent conferences, it's teachers standing up and saying, this is what we're doing in the school, these are the rules, this is what happens if homework is late, and all of those pieces. We're moving away from that to, this is what we're learning, this is what your child will be engaged in, this is how they will be interacting with the material. That movement away from communication to involvement. All of us have a commitment to involving parents in student learning within and beyond the school day. We have a commitment also to helping connect parents with community resources that can also further support the learning of the children. As we look, again, it's not just about the academic piece, but it's about that social-emotional piece as well. And we all have a commitment to working hand-in-hand with our PTAs and PTOs. So I'm going to pass this over to Mrs. Marzano, who's going to talk a little bit about our PTAs, PTOs, and some of the other consistent trends that we have across the building.
Thank you. So our involvement with PTAs and PTOs as administrators is as a partnership, and we really look forward to working with the members of our PTAs and PTOs in partnership to bring special programs to our students, to talk about learning opportunities and community events. We work with the board members, we're members of the executive board at our schools of our PTAs, and we work with the liaisons, volunteers to plan and schedule school events, after-school events, and opportunities for our kids such as fine arts. The PTA plans and runs events in conjunction with our school-based staff. We all try to get as many members of our staff to join the PTAs each year, and sometimes we even do little charts to see how many members of our school staff actually are on the PTA. We usually strive for 100%, but it doesn't always, we don't always reach our mark. Voluntary parental support is also offered at after-school programs. In each of our schools at all different levels, our parents are so important to us, and many of them come to us as PTA members to work with students, with us as teachers and administrators after-school hours. There's an opportunity for parent involvement at all levels in our schools. We try to communicate through electronic newsletters, also school messenger, voicemails, and emails, and also through text message. And we have school webpages that parents can access and identify how schools are doing, what's new on our calendar of events, which also links to our district page, which then you can look at all of the events from school to school and see what's going on in the community. We also have our fall open houses, which again, as Mrs. Kreuz said earlier, it's not so much of an information session as it is a sharing and interaction of information. We have our parent-teacher conferences, often in the older grades, students join their parents for these conferences. We have our district art show, one of the nights is tonight, this is our middle school art show. Elementary has already gone. We have our building and district concerts, where children get to highlight their voices and instrumental talents. And we have plays and performances all throughout the school year. I'd like to turn this over now to Mr. Joe Epsola from Arjona.
So what does it really look like at the elementary level? And even though, as Mrs. Kreuz said, we use that survey data to really try what each school does, but amongst all eight elementary schools, there's a lot of similarities. So we gave some examples of what it actually looks like in all eight of our elementary schools. One of the examples, and probably my favorite, are the positive behavior celebrations. Those are your town hall meetings, your assemblies, where the school community comes together. We invite our parents in to celebrate student achievement, both academic and social-emotionally. One of the, my favorite things, because we're celebrating students' learning. Teacher newsletter, as we alluded to, it's that shift from, make sure your kid wears their shoes, their sneakers on Tuesday because it's PE day, to really, how can you support, say, math instruction at home? Or when you're doing a field trip or driving in the car with your kids, how can you reinforce some literacy or some numeracy components within that newsletter? To change from that one way to that more conversational format. Which brings us to math and literacy workshops. These are another very exciting component at the elementary schools, where we invite parents into the school to actually kind of become a student for a period of time. And it's great to see them sitting at those little desks, trying to work with manipulatives, because I'm sure you've heard, well, math isn't how I learned it. So to try to reinforce how we can, how we do business in our schools and how they can support it at home. Our One School, One Book Celebration, which builds off the community as a whole with One Book, One City, One Book. Each school does it a little differently, but we basically support that literacy initiative by making sure that our students and our community is engaged. Which brings us to Mystery, our guest readers, which allows parents and other community members to come into the school and read, share their love of literature with our young students. Our Family Fun Nights, again, those look different in school, but every school has a version of those. Some of those include like a family picnic when we come back to school, arts nights, a family fitness night, something to bring the parents in after-school hours to, again, let them see kind of how we do business at the elementary level. And then each school has some sort of theme week. Our common one is Turn Off TV Week, where we ask kind of all of our students to go screen free for a week. So you think as a parent, oh, that's going to be tough, what am I going to do with my kids all week if they're not in front of the television? So the schools plan a week full of activities, which might be a fitness night, go into local businesses, just a way to really build that sense of community within the school, and again, reinforce what we do at school so that parents can carry it over at home. And lastly, is a variety of volunteer opportunities, from helping out in the media center, when we have kindergarten orientation, bringing some parents in so that they can kind of be that that friendly face that they see. Helping out, as we said, with the PTOs and PTAs, there's a variety of volunteer opportunities to get the parents in, and we find at the elementary level, we have a lot of parents that want to help, and we bring them into the school so that they have more exposure to how they can support learning at home. I'll turn it over to Mr. Commander, talk a little bit about how they do things at the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I'd like to thank Mr. Gottlieb from Harvest Side, Mrs. Williams from East Shore, who helped contribute to this presentation. At the middle school level, we feel very strongly that parents are an integral part of the education process, and everything that we do, we want to make sure that the opportunities afford them to be a part of that process as partners. The theme for the middle school presentation is family engagement events to showcase student work and to increase student involvement. And on top of some of the things that Rose talked about, these are some of the specific things that we're doing at the middle school level. Orientation nights and formative orientation nights for new students, as well as our sixth graders for our school community. Meet and greet with staff, students, and parents prior to the start of the school year with focused learning objectives. Display monitors in each school in their entryways highlighting current school-related events. Trimester award ceremonies, celebrating student achievement with parents and community members. And that's just a wonderful day for, to see the hard work of our kids and to see their parents really celebrating our students' success. Art night, and this is not the art night that I was talking about, but if you had the opportunity, please go and see the middle school art teachers did an outstanding job with their kids to display some fantastic work. We have art nights at the school, where parents and students have the opportunity to work creatively in the labs and partake in different art activities. Media nights, where our media specialists will train parents on technology available to middle school parents. Interactive PE nights, where the physical education teachers share different activities, and then the parents are allowed to take part in those activities. And some fun things will be an example of a student-parent-faculty basketball game to raise money for different charities. So these are just some of the things that highlight the middle school involvement for parent involvement. And the one point that I just wanted to bring back is that we really feel that parent partnership is essential for moving forward for middle school students. So I'm going to invite, introduce my friend, Mr. Fran Thompson, to talk about Jonathan Law High School and for high school in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Commander. Good evening, everyone. I can't emphasize enough in the article that you read how important it was when it talked about involvement with parents. And the old rule of thumb of, well, my kids are in high school now, so we should just leave them alone, that's actually the worst thing you could possibly do. And that's what we talk at law and at forum and at the academy to our incoming parents as well, to say, the more involved that you are, the more involved you are in being part of your child's academic and social-emotional progress, it's paramount, because this is the time when they need you most of all. So that's what we work on at the high school level. It's not about just receiving information, it's how can you be involved as a partner with the school? Because we see the students six and a half, sometimes seven or eight hours a day, and families see them the rest of the time. So if we are working together as a cohesive unit, then we really are wrapping around and supporting all of our students to do the very best they can. And some of the things that you'll see that we do at the high school level, you'll see a lot of things that we're trying to do collaboratively. So for example, our One Voice PTSA program brings together parents and teachers and students from both Jonathan Law and Forum high schools. Our freshman forum, which happens at both schools, is a community partnership with the Milford Prevention Council. And of course, as you know, our schools try to recognize and honor the accomplishments of all of our students as much as possible, because celebrating that success, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom, really is what makes Milford such a special place. In addition, tomorrow night, the guidance departments, again, from both high schools are coming together, and the academy are coming together here at Parsons to do a financial aid night for parents and students. Our college fair is a district-wide college fair held at the different schools, depending on, kind of rotate it. And we just had a very successful one at Jonathan Law High School, but again, for all of Milford. The academy just held a pasta, a parent pasta dinner, where they invited the parents in so that they could actually see the students work and be part of some of the lessons. So again, it's really that engagement piece, that involvement piece, that we're so proud of and continue to find ways to share those best practices for the betterment of all. And Mrs. Kreuz.
You forgot too.
And I forgot.
Athletic Booster Club and your post-op.
And the Athletic Booster Club. Two very independent and special parent organizations. So if you're seeing a pasta party, or if you were at the Hypnotist last week, or if you're coming out, you'll see that their parents, again, they're involved to support the kids' extracurricular activities, it is so special.
We're going. It's interesting though, because one of the things I was going to say in closing is, there are so many, so many amazing ways that parents can be involved, and one of the things I think all of us, not just those of us that are here tonight, but all of my administrative colleagues throughout the district really value is parent voice. We're always looking for new ways to involve, and we're very responsive when parents come and say, hey, you know, you've done all of these things, but have you ever thought about? And we love that, and so many of us really use our PTAs as well as other forms to seek input from parents, to look at ways that we can further expand and build upon the relationships that we already have with our parent community. So thank you very much for taking the time to hear a little bit about our programs. And I'm going to pass it back over.
Well, I think maybe you might want to-
Any questions? Any board members have questions? Yes, Federico?
Thank you. I went to a parent-teacher conference last week in a different district, and one of the, one of the things that the teacher said to me was, you know, the parents that, the parents that the students are doing well, and everything is good, those are the parents who come in. And he said, and it's great, and I'm, you know, glad that they come, but he said, the parents that I really need to see are the ones that don't come. So my question is, what can you do, what are you doing to target the parents that are not as inclined to participate?
I know, and, you know, we probably all have some similar ways we deal with it, but probably some differences between the buildings and the levels as well. I know that that is a constant concern. You're absolutely right, there are some parents who are in and with us and working with us all the time, whether it's at parent conferences, PTAs, or events. I know that many of us are very conscious about reaching out, and so we have conversations with our faculty members all the time, that don't just wait for the parent to reach out to you. If there's a parent that you want to see at parent conferences who has not signed up, it's my expectation that we're reaching out. And that we're reaching out not just as classroom teachers, but as support staff and administrators as well. One of the things I know that we're also committed to is really trying to expand the folks who are volunteering, who are coming in, and so we try to take the opportunities we can, whether it's at some of our funner nights, to kind of stand up right next to that parent and say, oh, we would love to see you, can you come in? Can we write your name down? Can I count on you for? But it is a challenge, and it's something that we work on. I don't know whether my colleagues?
Just one other thing that I'd like to add. Sometimes it's because of scheduling, the parents don't come in, the ones that we really want to see. And so we try to work flexibly with their schedules to say, you know, if you can't come in during the day to volunteer, then you might want to volunteer from home by working on such and such, and then bringing it to a convenient time. So we get in touch with them and let them know that whatever time they can offer is valuable to us, and sometimes that brings them more into the community.
Sometimes it's doing it at parent conference by phone, you know, reaching out whatever way we can.
Sometimes I think you'll see too, at the high school level, sometimes the parents who are least engaged didn't have a good experience when they were in school. So they're still thinking about that model of, geez, the principal's calling me, so somebody's in trouble, as opposed to, no, let's talk together about how we can make your child's experience and yours as well the best it can be, because you've got such an incredible community with all the resources. So that's kind of how we, at the high school level, we kind of try to reframe the perception of school, whether it's by phone, sometimes it's a home visit, sometimes it's a come after-school hours, because it's a less busy place and a little bit more serene. So, you know, we all try different approaches, but it is very much a focus to try to engage every parent, including the parents who are often the least engaged.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. DeGriggo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Kreuz, what I was hearing when I first got on the board from parents was, gee, when I went to schools in Milford, they didn't do it this way. So it was like, they're looking for explanations, and that's what this, this is an avenue for, because you have to, I guess, every year, a grammar school principal has to go through that, because their parents went to the schools and it's not that way anymore. So this is like an avenue.
We're very catchy answers of that, and, you know, especially, as you're saying, in the elementary school, because it's often our parents kind of first dip back into the changed or the newer educational experience. And I think, you know, all of us in different ways at those initial, at the kindergarten orientations, so we just had even kindergarten registration, we have parent volunteers who were perhaps working then and helping us out as well. At that first orientation meeting with parents, at the first open house, I mean, all of us in collaboration and partnership with our PTAs really, and PTOs really stress how much we want that, but how positive it is for kids as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll just add something. I think one of the pieces that is hard to capture is the influence that parents have on our thinking and on the way we do things. And that may come in all kinds of ways. So I think of, you just mentioned kindergarten, and two years ago, when we did the reconfiguration, we had orientation in September for the kindergarten families, because the schools were closed all summer long. And if you remember, in June, all the schools were going to be shuffled, so it didn't make sense to hold it then. But interestingly enough, the impact, the feedback that came back from the parents was, we loved it. We absolutely loved it. We loved the kids getting on the bus rides the day before school began, because they didn't forget from May to September, and so that good feeling that they had. And so we wrestled with, how do we make that happen this year, and we made it happen. But that was parent feedback. I think also too, of the fact that for several years, parent conferences at the middle and the high school were done by the advisory teachers, not by the classroom teachers. And it was parents, you know, I know they gave feedback to principals, but they also gave feedback to- gave feedback to me in the parent advisory meeting that we really don't find it as valuable as if we could talk with, you know, classroom teachers itself. And it was so powerful, we actually changed it in the middle of the year. We moved to, you know, having parent conferences literally be with the classroom teacher. So those are just two examples, but there's other things that principals or myself or, you know, teachers hear that kind of say, wow, this makes sense. And so it's acted upon. And so that's another way of parents being involved. I think, I would hope that parents feel that their voice is listened to. We may not always, you know, be able to accommodate it, but we really listen to parents. And I tell parents all the time, I tell them quite honestly, board members will listen to you more than they'll listen to me. And they kind of look to me, and I say, trust me, board members will listen to you more than they listen to me. And there's truth in that because it's their children who are in the school. So I just wanted to add to that piece to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to say that I appreciated the reading material that we were sent. I found it very enlightening. I've read a lot about Joyce Epstein, going back to my days at Riverside School when we started our family involvement committee. I hope things like that are still happening. But I, and in reading through it, it really kind of occurred to me, I started thinking about things that we do in the district. And we really do do a lot. I mean, even the attendance outreach that we talked about, that's a form of parent involvement. The community conversation that we had is a form of parent involvement. But the thing I found most interesting was some of the comments on homework and some of the, what the data shows on parent involvement regarding homework and how the demographics kind of change when it comes to homework. And I think that, you know, when the board gets to its homework policy review, which will be coming up at some point, you know, we might want to take a close look at that and how we can model our policy to be a little bit more meaningful. So I just thought that the handouts had a lot of useful information, and I appreciated seeing the survey results. You know, it's always good to see, you know, the things that we're doing right. Certainly, there's some areas of improvement that are needed, but it was just, and I think this will help me as I move forward with some of our policy work, especially revolving around the homework and stuff. So thank you for including it. Mrs. Krzyzewski?
I just wanted to say, as a parent, I've found in the number of years that we've been here in the schools that the administration has always been very willing to listen to me anyway. And when I've had questions or suggestions or concerns or, you know, even celebrating things, so I think it's great. And I've seen it in every school that my children have been in, so it hasn't been. So I'm assuming it's across the whole district, but it's, as a parent, I like that because it is true. Your voice is heard. And there's a lot of parents that are, I try to tell parents, they'll listen to you. If you go to the principal, they'll listen. They want to hear what you have to say. And it's true. So thank you.
Thank you. May I? Yes, Mrs. Federico.
Regarding the survey, I appreciate having the data. Were there any specific questions that you really focused on as a result of the survey?
I mean, I think on every single building, focused on one to two to three questions, absolutely. I mean, that's what we do over the summer with our skip team. I, you know, so for example, in my building, I literally sit down, we put all the data on the table, and we talk about it. And we look at what our area was the previous year, how we've grown. So in my building, we really were looking at engaging parents and understanding the goals that we have for children and involving parents, not necessarily just in the building, but in the educational process. And so that really then, we utilize that to make those action steps that we move forward. And at critical points throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, we'll go back and we'll reflect on how we feel we've done, what have we accomplished, what are our next steps, what are we going to carry over to the following year? You know, where did we overshoot? Where did we undershoot? And how does that play out? And then to get back that data from the spring will be informative in the work going forward over the summer.
Okay.
So I mean, and that really, that literally, that kind of protocol plays out in every single building throughout the district.
Okay. And then they looked at on a district level as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Was there anything that stood out as a point that you were focusing on or?
I'm more focusing on what's happening at the building level. I know that, you know, the communication piece on our end and also making sure that we are hearing issues when they're brought forward and either move it back down to the boot building level or address it from a district perspective occurs. But when the data comes to me first, I mean, first and foremost, I'm looking, I'm actually looking by level. I can look at all 14 schools, but I'm really looking at where's the patterns?
Okay.
At the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school level? And is there a pattern that's across the district, for example, that we're either with that, wow, we're doing really well in this area, or here's an area, here's a flag that we need to zero in on? And then quite honestly, when we meet with principals around their goal setting, that's part of their evaluation. So, and their goal setting is tied to a piece of this survey data. That's a requirement.
Okay. And so of course, when you're looking at it, when it comes to you, you've got the prior year, you're able to compare.
Right. But I also think too, one of the things that I do say to principals often is, have you talked with your parents about how are they interpreting this question? Because some of the questions, quite honestly, some of the questions, and some of these questions are state questions, so they're on every school system surveys. Might not necessarily be how I might word it, you know, so trying to get a sense of how are parents interpreting the question? Because it may be, you know, we're coming at it from two different perspectives. And if we're going to try and address it, we want to make sure we're addressing where the need is.
Okay.
So if I can build on that a little bit too. When we first developed the survey about five or six years ago, as Dr. Fieser said, a lot of the questions were from the state. One of the things that is really important for us in the building is the I-don't-know kind of answer, that middle answer, because that could mean multiple things for our parents. And so we really delve into that and really start to look at, is it that they don't know because, oh, I don't know, is it this, is it that? Or is it, I don't know, because I haven't had an experience that's related to that question?
Like the mean-spirited behavior one, that kind of jumped out.
Exactly.
Quite a few parents, so they don't know.
So we look at kind of the agree side, the disagree side, and then we take some time to look at that middle section too.
Are the questions the same every single year, or do some of them drop out and some?
For the most part, they've been the same. Five years ago when we did it, it was a larger survey. That was the Panorama Survey, if people remember that. And that was, you know, we paid to have that done, and we actually had an incredible return rate. We had 42% I think, return rate, which is kind of unheard of on a survey. But we knew that we weren't going to do that in-depth survey every year because it wouldn't necessarily serve a purpose. But we are required to do minimally a survey with parents, and so this is the abbreviated version of that.
I was just curious, because are you comparing the same questions year after year?
For the most part, we are. But we also recognize that it's different parents, a portion of different parents answering every year. And so that's why that's that issue of what's the question mean in the minds of both us as well as of the parents themselves.
I do think it's important to note that both parent involvement and actually social-emotional learning, they tie in very nicely together, so I'm glad we're doing this at the same meeting. But they are very much a part of our district priorities and goals. So, you know, the district takes it very seriously.
I mean, and one of the things I know that the building administrators do is we sit down with Mrs. Fazio and really talk about those key crossover pieces because we're not, we're not just talking academics. We are talking about the social-emotional piece. And so a lot of the decisions that you're going to hear her talking about this evening are an outgrowth of this work as well, our partnership.
Mr. Whiskeman?
When I was a young lad many years ago, we certainly did things differently. But the social structure was quite a bit different also. Families were integrated. It wasn't uncommon for the grandparents that lived with the parents or lived with the children, and that's the way society was. Society has changed a great deal since then. We have a lot of families with young parents who don't have the supports that existed in those days. And I think the school has a role to play to help especially new parents and young parents, first coming into the school system, to become good parents and to learn parenting skills as well. And I think that this is a part of that, that this drawing in of the parents to become involved in the school also is an opportunity to provide them with insights into gaining some parenting skills along with helping the children to do better. And that it works together and is useful to society. And so I think the school system has a role to play in that, in that structure within the society as it has evolved to today. So I applaud the effort, and I think it's excellent work that you're doing. Thank you.
Does Swift have something to say?
Sure. Yes.
Thank you. I just thought it was pretty fitting to add here that in addition to all the work that happens at the building level for all parents, this year, the special educators have put a lot of work and effort into informing parents of students with IAPs about their student's evaluation results and their proposed goals and their performance, and getting all the information to parents five days before the PPT, which allows them, when they have time to kind of read through the evaluations, digest all that information. And actually, they can at any time ask any one of us to sit with them and go through the evaluation results before the PPT. And that allows them to be far more informed so they can be an active participant and an informed participant in the process, which when you're learning all of that at the PPT, it's so hard to digest all of that and be ready to participate. And we really feel that that goal that we set this year for ourselves has really increased and improved parent participation in the PPT process. And further, we also surveyed parents last summer and got a lot of valuable information back from them on different areas they would like to learn more information about. And so we had some parent workshops based on the feedback that we got from parents this year. And we were able to tell them in September what the focuses were, the dates of the planned workshops that were at different times throughout the year. And then we sent out reminders and were able to address the needs that they put forward. So I feel like from every avenue, we're trying our best to get parents as involved as we can and have them be as informed as they can be.
Very good. Excellent. Other comments? Questions? Thank you. Very informative.
I'm going to have Mr. Burt introduce the second presentation, which is on social-emotional learning.
Good evening, as we're getting set up with the second presentation. I just want to draw your attention back to the board agenda items. When we talk about the background of this presentation, we have to go back to 2015 and even earlier. As the agenda item says, that there's always been a priority in the district for the social-emotional well-being of our students, as well as the academic and physical well-being of our students. And I know that throughout our school system, that there are many different efforts that are taking place to ensure that our students felt welcome in our schools and that we're meeting their needs. But as the vacancy and the supervisor student development opened up in the, again, it was the summer of 2015, and as I came into this position and interviewed administrators throughout the district, there was a clear need that while there was many things happening, a lot of work happening, that we needed perhaps a little bit more coordination. So we were able to, and it seemed to fit right into the job description of this position, the supervisor student development. And then we were lucky enough to have Ms. Fazio move from her building position into the central office position. And through that process, was given essentially the direction to say, we need to create a K-12, pre-K-12 actually, pre-K through 21, if you will, really coordinated program throughout the district to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students. So it's through that, it's been basically about a year since you came on in that role. So we thought it would be an appropriate time to give the board an update on the progress to date, as well as some of the current things that are happening, as well as some of the future plans. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fazio.
Thank you. So in my role as, you know, former principal of the academy, where many times we find the most at-risk youth in Milford, this work is something I am so passionate about and believe so wholeheartedly in. And so tonight's presentation, we'll sort of talk about what is social-emotional learning? Why is it important? How we've taken the district's priorities and goals and created our own vision around social-emotional learning? Where we are right now and what are our goals moving forward? And then I'm going to try to get through my portion quickly because really what's most important is we've got visitors from CAF Pen Elementary School and Harbor Side, I'm sorry, CAF Pen Elementary and Harbor Side Middle here to share their story around how this work has trickled into their professional work this year. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you having me share with you this evening.
Did I see that picture down the hall?
Yes, you did. So I was saying from East Shore Middle School, and I was saying actually to Mr. Burt today, my cover slide is so boring, so I scoured. And then Dr. Fieser pointed out another picture to me this evening with a dragon around, you know, rise above bullying, which also would have been a great, if I were to do it all over again, I'd have a picture on every wall representative of some sort of social-emotional learning piece. But yes, that's from the art show. So what is social-emotional learning? And I think it's important for us to sort of all be working off the same working definition. And I can tell you that the Collaborative for Academic Social-Emotional Learning, otherwise known as CASL, is the hub really for social-emotional learning. It's a nonprofit organization who does a lot of gathering of information and research. And so they define social-emotional learning as the process through which children and adults develop fundamental emotional and social competence to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. So that's our working definition of social-emotional learning as it stands right now. And so why is it important to focus on this as a school district and as school buildings and as a professional person who's working with children every day? There are several studies that support the work of social-emotional learning. And tonight I'm going to be sharing out just the results of just a few of them that were integral, an integral piece of our vertical teamwork that we started over the summer. And we reference these studies in our work. And so I wanted to bring that information to you this evening because I think it's also important for you to have that background as well. The first study I'm going to talk to you tonight about is the ACE study, which is the Adverse Childhood Experience Study done by the Centers of Disease Control. And what they did was they surveyed 17,000 adults who came in for physical exams. And after their exams, they surveyed them on their experiences. They also looked at their current health statuses and their behaviors. And they were able to track these adults for long periods of time. Just so that we're on a common understanding of what is an adverse childhood experience? It includes abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. So those are the three overarching aspects of adverse childhood experiences. But if we were to dive deeper into that, we're talking about different types of abuse such as physical, emotional, sexual, physical and emotional neglect, and many forms of household dysfunction such as violence in the home, incarcerated relative, substance abuse, divorce, and mental illness. So what is the result? What did they find as a result of these adverse childhood experiences? So they took these adverse childhood experiences and they gave each adult a score. And that score directly correlated to their ACE score. And on average, people with six or more adverse childhood experiences died nearly 20 years earlier than those with no Aces at all. So it was directly correlated to one's lifespan. To take it even further, a child without intervention with an ACE score of four, so this is four adverse childhood experiences, is four times, almost five times as likely to use- to use drugs and seven and a half times as likely to be an alcoholic when growing up. So they really connected some of these adverse child experiences to not just mortality rate, but at-risk behaviors that adults take on as they get older in life. So you may be wondering, well, why does this happen? Why is it that adverse child experiences have this long-term impact on individuals? And it really has to do with something called toxic stress. So there's different levels of stress that are normal. You know, the stress level that I'm experiencing right now is a normal stress level. I want my job, I want to keep my job, I want to make sure my message to you is great. But those adverse childhood experience levels of stress is considered toxic and it has an impact on the brain. So if my hand were a model of the brain and my knuckles were the prefrontal cortex where a lot of the decision-making and learning is occurring, and the bottom of my wrist is what we call our downstairs brain, where our reactionary brain is, children who are experiencing adverse childhood experiences are living in their downstairs brain, which means the neural connections in their brain are not being made to the frontal cortex. And it has a significant impact both socially, emotionally, and physiologically, such as hormone imbalance. We say, well, what's the big deal with that? Really has to do with the ability to fight infection. So students who are really sick don't come to school, right? It impacts their ability to maintain and establish relationships. So students who may seem lonely in school, not a lot of friendships, having a difficult time maintaining those relationships, are connecting with individuals in the school building. It impacts their ability to learn, slows their processing down. You might see defiant or checking out type behavior, acting out. Trauma has permanent effects on a child's memory. And again, I mentioned this before, there are long-term lasting physical health implications of toxic stress on the brain, including promiscuous behavior, liver disease, heart disease, COPD, many others. I know this has been really sad and depressing, but I can tell you that also from the study, there were characteristics identified that do make a difference in children's lives. So let's take that same child and let's talk about those protective factors that the Center of Disease Control identified as most impactful in helping children who are experiencing these adverse childhood experiences. Parental resilience. So the ability, we talked a lot about it. I heard so much of what I'm going to talk to you tonight, I heard with regards to the connections that the building principals are making with their families right now. So educating parents, being a resource to parents who are having a difficult time, connecting them with those community agencies that they need in order to make them more resilient at home is a protective factor for our children. Providing the opportunity for students to become connected in school, so whether it's a critical friends group or matching kids up together in school, having some sort of adult mentor in the building is a protective factor. Nurture and attachment. So listening and responding to a child in a supportive way and discovering and paying attention to the child's physical and emotional needs is a protective factor. Teaching skills affiliated with social and emotional learning support a child's ability to self-regulate, problem-solve, and find success in a variety of social situations. Providing parents with the opportunity to understand the child development process and the role of parenting in that process is considered a preventative factor. And concrete supports such as housing, clothing, healthcare, and food is a protective factor. So one would argue that the school system has a connection to every single one of these protective factors. And it's our role to support students who need it the most. The next study I'm going to speak with you tonight about is a study that came out of the Yale Center of Emotional Intelligence. This is Dr. Mark Brackett's work. He did a survey called the Emotion Revolution. I don't know if you've heard of it, Lady Gaga was involved. But they surveyed thousands of students across the country, high school students, and he simply asked them, how do you feel? And it was unsolicited. And the top three feelings they responded were this: tired, stressed, and bored. And then he asked them, how do you want to feel? And this is how they responded. Inspired, excited, valued, respected, motivated, and happy. When I come to work, that's how I want to feel. You know, so how do we get to a place where we are able to provide that same experience for our students? And Dr. Brackett is continuing his work around emotional intelligence and using an emotional intelligence, both for adults and for students, to help us get there. And we've been drawing on his research around that as well. And the last study I'll share with you is out of the Connecticut, or Connecticut, the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning, where they researched districts who were implementing social emotional learning program. And basically what they found was that those who are focusing on social emotional learning see an average of 11 percentile point increase on their standardized test scores. 11 percentile. So why? We did have some articles that we sent home with you over the weekend and, you know, in those articles, it referenced, you know, we have reduced conduct problems with social emotional learning problems, we have reduced emotional stress, we increase student attendance. And what do all those things have to do with? It maximizes instructional time in the classroom. So we're extending the time kids are in the classroom, ready and able to learn. And that is the intent of social emotional learning. It is to support our students, to make sure they're there, supported, and ready to learn. Those 11 percentile points are from 100% from maximizing instructional time in the classroom and kids being ready. So I commend the board. Ms. Glennon, you referenced this earlier, that you've, it's obvious that the board has made this a priority specifically in priority one. But when I read through the rest of the priorities, I see language of social emotional learning embedded in every single one of those priorities. So I'd like to take a few minutes now to say, how have we used this framework or these goals to create a framework for ourselves as we move forward? Because I'll say that Connecticut is really not in a place where they have standards on social emotional learning. So we've had to reach out to other districts and the research out there in order to identify our own and create our own framework for moving forward. And I really have to commend the Milford School District for really being trailblazers in this work across the state. So if we use that priority one as our driving force and our foundation, we look at social emotional learning in four different pillars: culture and climate, competence, instruction, competencies, instruction, and curriculum. I'll take a few minutes to kind of review what those look like and what we've done so far with the work. So with culture and climate, each one of these pillars, we have overarching questions that help guide our work. So the culture and climate piece is the where, right? So where is the learning happening? Our school building, our district? Many of the principals talked about how are we, how does the building feel when parents, kids walk through the room? What are the partnerships that we're forming with them? So how do our schools and classrooms feel to all members of the learning community? And how do we build the capacity of our staff to support strong school and district culture? Our focus this year in this aspect has really been around relationship, building strong relationships and personal connections. And we've done that in a variety of ways. I've had the honor of providing professional development to our district administrators on using emotional intelligence as a lever for leadership within the building. And I partnered with some of my district administrator colleagues. Ms. Sedgigan is in the audience this evening. She is a part of that team. And we have brought learning modules to the district administrators around why is emotional intelligence important and how does it relate to social emotional learning in our building? Because if we don't start with the adults first, it will fall flat on its face. This topic is not something that's familiar to everyone. We have to make sure we're all starting on the same place first before we bring it to our students. And so that's the intention of the professional development. I've had the opportunity to work with our new teachers in our new teacher academy and helping them establish strong classroom culture. That's an area that sometimes is difficult for new teachers coming in. So we've gone through different strategies and what to use, the importance of developing strong personal connections with students at the beginning of the year and maintaining that throughout the year. And I've also brought restorative practice training to our school administrators, our deans of students, school climate specialists, guidance counselors, social workers, and school psychologists as sort of a first layer of training around the implementation of restorative practice when there's been difficult situations amongst students. The next pillar is competency. So this is the what. I provided you sort of an overview of this work. This is a work that I'm very proud of. The social emotional learning vertical team came together over the summer to really dive deep in this work. And in the end, we were able to create a draft framework affiliated with the five social emotional learning competencies that have been provided to us through the CASL And in that framework, we've, it's based on research and it includes both the competencies, goals, and learning outcomes at grade-level clusters. And so this is really the document from which we're going to be working off of as we move forward in the work. Next is instruction. So how and when will we intentionally teach the knowledge of skills and knowledge and skills of social emotional learning? And what instructional practices will we implement to support social emotional learning? So there are a variety of different resources out there. In fact, there's hundreds. And CASL has done a meta-analysis on almost all of the social emotional learning curriculums and programs that are out there and has really provided a comprehensive overview with regards to what do they offer, what are their pros and their cons. We used the framework over the summer and crosswalked it with this meta-analysis and identified sort of a top 10 curriculum, curriculums and programs that are out there. And I want to make it clear to the board, the vertical team is very passionate about not adopting one program as a sort of one-size-fits-all, here's our SEL work. Many of these programs are very strong. They have a lot of potential, but not one of them is going to fit the needs of the Milford community. And so we will draw upon them and draw upon their strengths to create our own social emotional learning program that fits the needs of our community and our school buildings. And so we are in the midst of a research review and site visits. There's many districts within the state who are using these programs, which we either have visited or are planning to visit. Mrs. Lewis, Jessie Lewis's mother, the Choose Love Foundation is a program out of Newtown. She's coming to present to a variety of members of our educational community on Thursday to talk about a free curriculum that she has created. So this is the piece on instruction, and that's where we are so far. And lastly is the curriculum piece. And what I mean by that is the cross-curricular piece. How and when do we integrate social emotional skills and concepts into core academic areas? So we know it's out there, right? So how are we intentional about it? We really have to dive deep in this work. We really haven't gotten too far, but we have done some curriculum crosswork with the Health PE advisory because that also falls under my umbrella, so that's easy to do. But eventually, working with the instructional supervisors and the building principals around, where is this really naturally embedded within the curriculum and how do we make it so that it's explicit and we can capitalize on that opportunity? Because social emotional learning is not its own standalone piece. Yes, there's pieces of it that are important with regard to explicit instruction, but it should be living and breathing everywhere we go as part of our district culture. So again, I just want to reiterate, not one pillar by itself is important, but it's the work together of all pillars that really creates a healthy and sustainable social emotional learning program for our district. Super proud and excited about the work that we've done and I'm really excited about the work that's ahead of us. So before I pass it off to our friends that are here, just highlight a few of our next steps in our journey. We will be developing social emotional learning units for pilot implementation in grades K-2, 6, 9, and 12. We really are going to dive deep this summer around what are the ways that we assess this work? And so we'll look at the parent feedback surveys as a way to assess that work, student achievement data, student discipline, attendance. So how do we capture the effectiveness of this work? That's a challenging part, but we're dedicated to finding a good set of baseline data points that will help inform our work as we move forward. And, you know, continue to expand feedback on the work that we're doing beyond just our vertical groups. So I'll be looking to bring the framework to the building principals. It's really in its draft form. I know that I have plans with the AP psych teachers. Once they're done with the AP psych exam, I'm going to push into their classrooms and ask them for feedback on the framework, seeing as though they'll be done and they'll sort of have a better understanding of the work. And who's better to tell us what kids need than kids, right? And then also working with parents. I actually invited, talking about parent involvement, I invited a parent to come along with me who's very interested in the work. And so I invited her to come out, but would want to certainly get some feedback from parents in terms of what are their needs as it relates to this and how do we create programming in our district to support their needs as well. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Sedgigan from CAF Pen Meta and allow her to introduce her team. And they're going to share with you a little bit of their experience with the work so far this year.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. We're delighted to be here. I just want to again echo Mrs. Fazio's thanks to the board for supporting the idea behind this work through the board priorities and certainly our central office administration and Ms. Fazio. The work that she's introduced to our school administrative team, I think all of my colleagues would agree, has really impacted our practice as leaders within the district. And I'm really excited to have a team of fabulous educators here who are doing everything they can to make a difference for children. We know that we have now more than ever increased demands upon families to parent children. We have increased demands upon educators to really deliver strong programming for children. And this work is foundational to any of the academic sets we have set for ourselves. So with no further ado, I have Mr. Viveka here, who's one of our primary elementary special educators, working specifically with students with social emotional disturbance in our elementary school and also pushing into core classrooms. I have Ms. Sidney Hyatt, who happens to be our Teacher of the Year for CAF Pen Meta. So grade two teacher, also grade four and one previously looping up with kids. I have Ms. Kelly, kindergarten teacher. And I have our teacher leader, Erin Marshner. And so they're just excited to tell you about what we're doing and what we're doing at CAF Pen Meta. Take your white gloves.
I'm going to start. I'm going to give you a brief overview of restorative practices and how it really supports social emotional learning. Restorative practices repairs relationships and strengthens communities. Restorative practices does not replace consequences, but can replace or reduce the need for consequence. What's important to know about restorative practices is that students are held accountable for their actions. And what they do is they address the students that they've affected and they look for ways to make it right. So an example of that is I had a student that damaged a Chromebook, which was kind of a big deal. The Chromebook broke. And we looked for ways that he could make it right and we talked about it. And one of the ways that we came up with was for him to be a computer lab monitor so that he could learn respect for technology. So it was directly related to the harm that he caused, but it was also making it right. There was a nice balance. So it worked out really well. Some of the questioning that we, I brought my cards and that's... Some of the questioning that we, I brought my cards, and that's, some of the questions that we use are, you know, what were you thinking at the time? What have you thought about since? You know, who has been affected? I often think there's more people affected than the students realize, which is nice when you have a conversation with the kids and you can really talk about all the people that are involved. I think it's a way to resolve conflict in a positive way, which is a necessary life skill. One of the proactive components of restorative practices are circles, which I've used in classrooms and in our faculty. Circles are designed to develop relationships and build community. The shape of the circle is relevant. You get together, you either sit or stand in a circle. You're facing each other. You can develop trust, you can build relationships, and connectedness. I did bring one of our talking pieces. Another component of the circle is to have a talking piece. This one is significant to our faculty that we use at some of our meetings. I encourage the teachers in our community for their classrooms to find something that's relevant to the students. Sometimes having a circle to decide what they might feel would be helpful, or what they think of, or things that resemble their class, which is really nice. They can kind of come up with their own. I think that it's really more of a positive approach that leads to positive outcomes. And it holds them accountable, and they have the desire to make it right. Circles can also be used as kids build relationships and trust with each other to respond to difficult behavior. The example I'd like to leave you with, that I recently, about a month ago, I did a circle with a fifth-grade class. I was called down. There was a student that was very upset because another student was left out of receiving a birthday invitation. So it seemed like a great opportunity for me to have a responsive circle with this group of girls from this whole class. So myself and our social worker, we went down and we facilitated a circle. We talked about who was affected, how they could talk to each other. We talked about ways to make it right. One of the things I felt was important when I led the circle was that making it right didn't mean inviting everybody to this birthday party. But it was really more of the message of how others were affected and how their behavior might change the next time this would happen. The social worker and I followed up by calling all of the families of the girls that participated in the circle to let them know and follow what the circle was intended for, the restorative practices that were used, and their child's, how they participated in the circle. And we got great feedback from it. So it was really nice that the families were really supportive and acknowledging of, you know, the way that we handled it. So I will turn it over to my colleagues, who will further talk to you about social-emotional learning.
We brought some goodies with us. We're just going to spread out so that you can take a look at some things that we use in the classroom. So good evening, everyone. We're so excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the ways we are currently utilizing social-emotional learning tools and strategies in our professional lives, as well as in our classrooms at CAF Pen Meadow. As Mrs. Faziano said before, as educators, we understand that meeting the social-emotional needs of students in the classroom is the foundational work necessary for creating a community of students who are ready and available to learn every day. We truly value the social-emotional learning tools and strategies that Mrs. Fedigan has brought to CAF Pen Meadow, because they've helped us not only improve our own practice as educators, but also maximize quality instructional time in the classroom. One of the first activities we did in the beginning of the year with Mrs. Fedigan was thinking about our best self-attributes, which Nick is going to talk a little bit about now.
Let me talk about our best self. Our best self is about creating what we want for ourselves and creating a plan, how to get there. To do this, we listed adjectives to describe our personal best and how we want it to be seen, experienced, and talked about. We also use these descriptions to make goals for ourselves. When I think of best self, I imagine the oxygen masks on the plane coming down. You have to put your own mask on first before helping others. This ties into the best self. To achieve your best self, you need to take care of yourself first. For me, this was true during the school year. I ended up injuring my back and needed surgery. I had to make the choice of focusing on myself over others, and focusing on recovery became an important goal of mine. In addition, I had to hold myself accountable for working on those goals. So I made sure I had time during the week to attend my physical therapy and yoga classes. With my students, we are continuously setting goals and expectations to improve our best self. Sometimes those goals might be short-term, like staying focused on an activity, or long-term, like achieving a set NWA score.
The next part that Mrs. Fedigan had us do, actually as adults, as our staff, was we read the book, The Energy Bus. So each staff member had a copy of The Energy Bus. And she created this wonderful bookmark for us. So we know every month when we were at our meeting in our professional learning communities, our PLCs, we were able to read the book and then kind of discuss it and talk about it. There were some rules for following your energy bus, I guess you want to say. The first one is fully ride with positive energy. So we really took that and, you know, just be positive, be open, understand where others were coming from. Another one was love your passengers, which invite everybody on your bus, even if they don't want to come on. Maybe they'll come on a little later. So really having that just positive energy, loving everybody, accepting everyone for who they are and what they bring to the table. So we actually had this for the back to our classroom, is each teacher received the Energy Bus book for kids. And these rules, 10 rules for the ride of your life corresponds to the kids' one.
Like a poster that you might see in a classroom. So it kind of takes those big grown-up rules for the energy bus and kind of makes them kid-friendly for kids as well.
And part of our kind of positive behavioral system that we have at school is when we got, they got energy bus tickets so that if they were caught doing something positive. And so that, you know, little things that, bus tickets got put in a drawing, and they got to pull one, and they got a prize. So it was really enticing for them to want to make those good decisions and have that positive mindset. And this also relates back to the framework of social-emotional learning and social awareness relationships. It really helped with our professional learning communities, because we all have different ideas thrown to the table. And also our collaboration time that Mrs. Fedigan has set up for us, sometimes once a week, twice a week, that we were able to get with the A, B, C, D schedule. So really just kind of focusing and being open to everyone's ideas and opinions and to collaborate even more effectively.
So the next tool that we kind of explored with Mrs. Fedigan was the mood meter, which I'm going to ask Alicia to hold up here. And the mood meter actually comes from Ruler, which was developed by Mark Brackett at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. And how the mood meter works is there are four different main areas on the mood meter, and it's different feelings. And there's two axes. There's pleasantness and energy. So as you move across, you know, low pleasantness, low energy, up to higher energy, up to higher pleasantness. And we use this to kind of check in and see where we're at, where we're feeling emotionally throughout the day. It's great for grown-ups and it's great for kids. With the grown-ups and with the kids, it helps develop that self-awareness. How am I feeling? What we do with the kids a lot is we let them know, you know, feelings are okay to have. It's okay to come in and be really sad. But then as teachers, it's our job to say, how can I get this child who's feeling this low-energy, low-pleasance feeling, up to this high-energy, high-pleasance feeling where they're ready to learn and they're ready to be in school? So as teachers, we see where they are, we allow them to feel those feelings, and then we think about what we can do to help them. And same with grown-ups. As grown-ups, after we've had a challenging conversation with another colleague or with a parent, we need to get in check before we can come back to the classroom and be our best self for our kids all day. If you have a really hard conversation and you come back in the room, I mean, you're not ready to teach. You're not ready to engage in the kids and show them that you're there for them. By having the mood meter as a tool, we can check in. We can say, you know what? I'm feeling kind of up here in the red right now. What can I do as a grown-up to get you back to this green area where I'm ready for my kids every day? So it's a great tool both for grown-ups to use and for students to use in the classroom.
And I use this actually in my classroom. I stole some free paint chips from Walmart, so that was fun. And when my students, you know, we talk about maximizing that classroom time and that, like, the quantity of learning is not really, it's the quality of learning time. And so, you know, I had a little boy who was just, he was in like the yellow. But it was time for a Reader's Workshop. And Reader's Workshop, I mean, yellow's great, but not for Reader's Workshop, because we are all over the place. So he really recognized that he was in yellow, and he said, I really think I need to go to Alaska. And I call a little common corner Alaska, because I need to chill out sometimes. So he went to Alaska. He kind of refocused himself and got to where he needs to be in order to maximize his independent reading and partner reading time and really be fully in Reader's Workshop. And so the kids love it. It works for them. They're so aware of their emotions, and it really just helps them regulate them and know that it's okay to be in the red, but maybe it's not so appropriate for the, you know, activity that we're doing in the classroom.
Right. And they start to get good at it. And they'll come up to you and say, you know, I had a hard morning at home. I really need to do something to get myself ready for the day. And then we explore, what can we do? What strategies? In my room, I have a calm and catty. Do you want to hold peanuts to the elephant, help you make you feel a little bit better? Do you want to do some breathing? Do you want to build something to help get them ready to learn, which is our overall goal as educators? The next piece we wanted to talk about, which was kind of our final piece tonight, was looking at growth mindset and how growth mindset and teaching students how to embrace a growth mindset has really helped to maximize instructional time in the classroom. And growth mindset really relates to that responsible decision-making piece of social-emotional learning, having kids learn how to set, monitor, adapt, and evaluate goals to achieve success. In my room, we kind of started the year looking at growth mindset versus fixed mindset. Fixed mindset is, I'm not good at this, I'll never be good at this. Growth mindset is, I'm not good at this right now. What can I do to improve? How can I improve my reading? How can I improve my math? And switching, shifting that mindset for my kids helped increase academic time, because they started looking at problems instead of saying, I can't do this, I give up, I'm done, I need your help. They persevere, they work at it. They'd say, you know, I don't get this yet. We talk about the power of yet in my room all the time. I don't get this yet, but I know with hard work and I know with perseverance, I can do anything. And you'll see when you come into my room, when the kids are working independently, they're independent. They're not coming up to me. They're taking on their struggles by themselves. They're working at it. In my room, one thing that we also say is keep calm and embrace the struggle. And before I start a math lesson, I'm like, what are we going to do today? And the kids are like, we're going to embrace the struggle. And I'll watch them, and they'll work, and they'll work, and they'll work. But they know that with hard work and with that practice and with that growth mindset, they're going to continue to achieve those goals that they set for the future. So that was another piece that was really helpful in gaining that academic time in the classroom for my kids and also as a grown-up embracing a growth mindset. You know, when I look at working with a challenging student, I started to make a shift. Instead of asking myself, why isn't this kid getting it? Why is this kid continuing to behave this way? I started to shift to, what can I do? What am I not doing right now in my classroom to help this kid get to where he needs to be? So having that growth mindset allows you also to work well with your colleagues and your students, shifting to that idea of we can do anything with hard work.
It really also plays into the fact of if you're having a difficult conversation with a parent, shifting your mindset, myself to be my best self, do I, you know, want to respond a way that might make them upset or that might make me upset? Having that just growth mindset is how can we help the parents understand or get work through a problem that they're having, just having those difficult conversations? And also, when Mrs. Fedigan comes in to do an observation, having that growth mindset that she's there to help you grow. So if she gives you some feedback, you want to be able to say, oh, okay, yeah, that's an awesome idea. That's an awesome.
How can I improve?
Right, how can I improve? Instead of having that fixed mindset of like, oh, nope, that lesson was amazing, and I have nothing to fix. She's wonderful with that, and really having that growth mindset just really helps you. So just in conclusion, we found that as teachers, using these tools has helped meet the social-emotional needs of students and therefore maximizing the quality of instructional time in the classroom instead of the quantity of it. Do we have any questions? Questions?
I have a question from Mrs. Faziano.
Sure.
When, over the summer, I don't know if it's so much of a question.
That's okay.
When you're, the assessments you mentioned for the progress of the program were all sort of indirect. Have you, when you think about assessments, it's going to be challenging, but there might be more direct ways to measure the success? So you might see a more short-term win?
So there's some things that are just starting to come out around that. I'm keeping my eyes and ears open. Dr. Fiezer mentioned a panorama that we used, you know. So they just sort of did this whole webinar around, so, you know, everyone's sort of jumping on the SEL bandwagon. So we're very careful with regards to what's coming in our direction and what's, you know, aligned to the work in Melford. But yeah, absolutely. The more direct and sort of tangible data that we have, the better, for sure. So, thank you.
Ms. Faziano, do you have more of the presentation as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, we do. We have.
Any questions for the CAF Pen folks?
I have just one question. So I know that this is anecdotal, but do you have a sense of, say, a year ago, you all were at CAF Pen in your classrooms? And the change that you've seen this year as a result of using these approaches and strategies?
Yeah, I actually, I don't have a behavior system in my classroom.
Neither do I.
It's the mood meter. And it's really been, I used a stoplight last year, which I don't enjoy the stoplight anymore. I think this is a wonderful tool to use, because we're not punishing the students, we're not getting consequences because they act or feel a certain way. They're really being self-reflective and working through that and to see how next time you can make a more positive choice.
Especially with the growth mindset piece. I've seen, I was able to loop with some of my students that I had in first grade. And seeing them as independent learners in second grade, yes, with age, some of that independence has come. But seeing them tackle problems, even my most challenging students, seeing them work independently, tackle problems, the NWEA, and give it everything they got because of that idea of the growth mindset and the perseverance, I've seen a lot of growth with them as well.
And just to piggyback off the end of your, three of my students have been taking the test. And out of the five tests that they have taken, three of those scores were above their goal and then two were on goal, which last year we may not have seen that. So I think really diving into this really did help that.
I just want to add one other piece. The amount of time that we were able to see peers, and I know that Mrs. Swift and Annalise, Mrs. Faziano will be able to talk more about this, and throughout the summer, the peers spending time with non-disabled peers, students in our ED program and students across the continuum of special education services, has just grown tremendously in this second year as a K-5 school, especially with our youngest learners who may struggle with that regulation piece in the classroom. So that's the time to do it when they're little, K-2, and set them up for success in future. Grades as content becomes more challenging. So I don't know, Carol, I'm sure you have seen that as well with our special education data.
We have seen that, and we have kids who are included for a great portion of the day, if not the whole day. And we have kids who are exiting from our program because of their tremendous success. And who would have thought that, you know, with a couple of years in the program that they're ready to go back to just more typical special education services? So those are huge celebrations for the children.
I think it's important to, research shows that this actually, this whole, it all ties in going to infancy. I mean, pre-K. I went to a workshop recently for my early childhood work on conscious discipline, and you were there. And it just tied, if they're not ready to learn, they can't learn. And the brain and, you know, they're stuck down here and they just can't, they can't get up where they need to be if they're not in the right place. So it's, I just think this is phenomenal. It's very exciting to me, some geeky stuff. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Is there more to the presentation?
Yes. I meant for them, if they're already ready to talk.
I'd just like to introduce this worker from Harborside Middle School, who is here to share a little bit of her experience. I know she's with Ms. Scheibl as well, around how this, what this work has looked like at the middle school level as well.
So as the assistant principal at Harborside, you know, a lot of my job revolves around discipline. So I want to share a story that when we started doing restorative practices at Harborside, one of my first jumping in, I was, this is my story. So I was walking down the hall one day, and I saw a student just kind of hanging out in the hall. And I said, hey, what are you doing? Why aren't you in class? And I got this, I'm not doing anything wrong, and leave me alone, and blah, blah, blah. And I was like, oh, why don't you come to my office? Because I knew that he was not in a great place. So we kind of corralled him back to my office, and that attitude and that response didn't change much. And I said, it seems like you're having a really bad day. And he was. And while I'm talking to him, I get a phone call from a teacher, and she says, I'm looking for so-and-so. Is he with you? Why, yes, he is. Well, in my class, he was being really mean to a girl in the class, and this girl's really upset. I was like, okay, that's two. And I continued to talk to him, and then I get a phone call from someone else from another class, where he had just been super mean, making fun of someone. So I was back to him, thinking, what am I going to do with this? I had the trifecta sitting right in front of me. So I decided, you know what? I'm going to jump into the restorative practices. This is a really great place to start. So I did employ Katie Scheibl, our social worker, and our school psychologist, because really quick, we had to do a quick meeting, how are we going to get all of this done? And in the end, I facilitated one of the restorative circles. done? And the, in the end, I facilitated one of the restorative circles with one of the girls who he was being very mean to, was very upset. And what this did for her was gave her a voice. And she said, I want you to know that this is how you made me feel. And the, the, the body language was amazing. You could see him completely just go, oh, oh my God, I am so sorry. I, I'm just having a really bad day. And she said, but because you're having a bad day, that doesn't mean that you can treat me like that. And it was just this amazing little moment that they got, they got to say their piece, everyone had a voice. And in the end, how are we going to move forward? And he said, I, I won't do it again. And, you know, and they had an apology and it was wonderful. Then we had our second restorative circle with the other student. So we had the school psychologist, Katie or the school psychologist took the other one and the same idea. And guess who was in the third restorative circle? That would be me. So I said, I can't do a restorative circle with me because it wouldn't, wouldn't quite go the same way. So I had the school psychologist facilitate that restorative circle between the student and myself. And I got a chance to voice what, how he made me feel. All I did was go up to him in the hall and say, what are you doing bud? And you snapped at me and you yelled at me. And we talked about being respectful and how I was just trying to help. And it was, again, this is a story that I've told a million times. It was very emotional at the time. He said, I am so sorry. I know you're always here to help us. I'm so sorry that I reacted to that. And I, we kind of did our, our final piece of the restorative circle. And the school psychologist said, I'm just going to step out for a minute. She had to go out to the office and get something. And it was this very strange, quiet moment that we had because he and I were still circling it up. So we're just looking at each other. And he, and, and I got very emotional because I know that he was going through a lot. This kind of behavior though certainly led us to a place where we were able to then know what his needs were and to further support him. So he and I are sitting in my office this very strange little awkward moment. And I looked at him and he was so upset that he had hurt my feelings. And he said, Mrs. Whitaker, I really am sorry. And the school psychologist wasn't there for that moment. And I said, I know you are. And so, you know, we had this moment of how are we going to move forward? You know, look, if you're having a bad day, come and see me. But you can't just be lashing out to people. Look at where we are. We're three restorative circles in and we haven't even hit lunch yet. So, so that was just a moment that was super emotional for me, that he really did let his guard down and he let me in. And, and that's kind of how our relationship has gone since then. And that was kind of the middle of the fall. So that's, that was just a wonderful moment. We've had, we could sit here and tell you a million stories, but Katie wanted to share a different type. Hers wasn't the three.
No, we've also done them in ways with the whole classroom. So we know that eighth graders toward the end of the year tend to escalate a little bit, just because they're anticipating graduation. They're now anticipating a huge change, a huge life change, going from kind of the top dogs in the middle school to now they're going to be freshmen and not know the expectation, not know the environment, et cetera, et cetera, a million other things that go through their minds. And so we had a whole class that we did a huge circle with, first day of trimester three for health class, where there were some known escalators, where we saw kind of spikes in their behavior throughout the year and knowing that this is now the time that they can either really shoot themselves in the foot and get in trouble, or the time that they can kind of rise to the occasion and say, this, I'm going to end the year on a fabulous, fabulous note. So we've started out doing circles in some of these humanity classes where it's the last trimester where the kids begin to kind of drop a little bit. And we started at, yeah, they relax a little too much with homework and fun stuff. And we started at the expectation with this is your class, this is your end to your year. It's not about the teacher, it's not about anything else. It's about you leaving your legacy in this class with this teacher. How do we want this to run? And the kids came up with their norms. They came up with the expectations of each other as well as the teacher. And it gave them a chance to not just go from what the teacher's expectations are, but to set up their expectations for what they needed from the teacher to be successful as well, which was huge. And having the kids, when they first looked at the teacher and they said, I don't know if I can say this. And I said, no, no, go say it, say it, like you can, this is okay. And they were able to say it. And just seeing kind of the, I just said it and I didn't get in trouble and I'm going to come back here tomorrow and we're going to do what now? And just seeing, and they've had a phenomenal, phenomenal couple of weeks where it could have gone in a very different direction. But now the class is not just the end-of-the-year health humanities class, it is their health class that they are running and they are ending the year with, which is huge. So it doesn't always have to be just kind of the reflection of, you know, giving them a voice to, especially in a, in a day and age right now where they don't really have a huge voice to talk to each other. They forget how to talk to each other. They hide behind social media, they hide behind everything else. That putting them in a room with another person that they may or may not have done something bad to or had something bad happen to them with is very, very uncomfortable. But it always ends phenomenally. So it's, it's something that we love. And we have students that will come in and say, okay, so this is the deal with this teacher, let's circle it up. Let's make this happen. And, which is awesome.
We'll determine that, yeah.
Yeah, because.
It's been very powerful.
It really has.
In all of my years in education, it really has been so rewarding for me and so powerful. One of the most powerful things I think I've engaged in. And I can't look at any of my colleagues because when I think of that particular story, I cry every time. But it has been just amazing. And the parent feedback on this.
It was phenomenal.
We always contact the parents and let them know what has happened. And we're so appreciative of this is the way we're handling it.
Yep.
As opposed to bam, bam, the tensions and consequences. We're really trying to get to the core of what these kids are dealing with and try to support them and help them. So it's been great. Annalise, thank you for all your work with us. Appreciate it.
We all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Conversation piece is one thing I'd never thought of, that, you know, the ability of for them to talk.
We have a penguin, we have a fuzzy penguin, but every average school has their own penguin. That's our mascot.
And we each have different names for it, which the kids get a kick out of. Depending on what room they go into, they're like, okay, is it Peppy or Hotlow or? So it's just fun.
They're part of it.
Yeah.
So thank you, everybody. I appreciate your, your time. Did anybody have any other specific questions for me that I can answer for you at this time?
I just had a couple of points that I hope you can clarify. Just you mentioned the vertical team a couple of times.
Yes.
Can you just explain who that is? And one of the things also that we've talked about is the community link as well, because there's a lot of community resources.
That's correct.
I just didn't see that come out in the presentation, so maybe just add that if you would.
I appreciate that. The social emotional learning vertical team was developed at the end of the school year last year. And we invited teachers of both elementary, middle, high school, regular ed teachers, special education teachers, school social workers, school psychs, guidance counselors, district administrators, central office supervisors, as well as community agencies. And so Milford Youth and Family Service Representation was on that committee as well. Summertime's are tough, so we didn't get the broad spread of the community agencies that we had hoped for, but they are still engaged in that work moving forward. So that was the social emotional learning team, that's what it was comprised of. It shifted a little bit along the way. And I will say, the work that has been done over the summer, over the school year, is done after school on a volunteer basis. And we, we always have a really great number of kids, up kids, teachers and staff members coming, coming through to be a part of the work. So it's been great. In terms of the other community partnerships, I've been working with a variety of different community agencies and meeting with them. How do we connect families with what's available? Milford is such a, has such a wealth of resources as it's related to those agencies, social services, mental health. And so what's the best way to connect kids with those agencies, to connect families with those agencies? That's definitely been a part of the conversation, will continue to be the work moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh. Yes, Mr. Wiskman?
One thought I had was, you mentioned that you built the framework in part based upon the policies that we've already put in place.
The district goals and priorities. Yep. Yeah, we definitely use that as a driving force.
My thought from a feedback standpoint to the board would be whether or not you and the team members here see these goals, priorities, and policies that we have put in place as supportive enough of what you've done, or whether there's opportunities for improvement through these policies. Because we're reviewing policies now and I think it would be ideal time for your input to be brought forward in terms of suggestions for improvements in terms of those policies that we are reviewing at this point in time.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I know that I've spoken to Mr. Burt about this a little bit. Right now, we're working with the team on the wellness policy. And so we sort of grappled with, with the wellness committee, do we, do we embed some of the social emotional learning work into the wellness policy? But given the depth of the wellness policy, as you'll see when it comes forward to you, we felt as though it might get lost in there. And does it eventually become its own policy that sort of outlines practices around social emotional learning and the priorities of the board behind that? But that would be, you know, something that I would be, love to engage in.
Well, at the appropriate time and when things have developed to that extent, as a board member, I would appreciate hearing from administration and the kind of development suggestions for improvements and thoughts that the board in turn could, could promote, which would be supportive of the work that you're doing. And consistent, because we need to have policies which are consistent with our goals and objectives. And sometimes a turn of phrase can make a difference.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Federico?
Thank you. Just a comment. I want to thank you and the team members for all of your hard work and your presentations tonight. We, I could really see your, your passion, your enthusiasm for this program. And I think it's really, really important work. And I'm glad to, to see that you have Scarlett Lewis coming in. I've seen her speak before. I think she's phenomenal and she has just such a strong, positive message. So I appreciate what you're saying about it's not one-size-fits-all. You're going to look at many programs, but I'm glad that you're hearing from her.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, teams, for coming out. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
With that, I will move on to public comment. I hope there's anybody in the audience that was just to make public comment tonight. I'll read the public comment statement. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the board and education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please note that at committee of the whole meetings, public comment is limited to agenda items only, which tonight is our parent involvement report and the update on social emotional curriculum. If you wish to speak to the board, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comments?
Good evening. 400 F.C. 418 Anderson Avenue. I really loved this presentation. I want to address Dr. Fieser and the team, how wonderful it is, how you empower your staff. I, I think it's, it's wonderful to hear from the front lines of what's going on in the school system. Social emotional learning is so key. And I think that what also was exemplified tonight is what's really important to have, the social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, the whole team, it's a whole school climate. And I don't think that we could lose any of those people. And it's really important to empower them and to empower the students and for them to have their voice heard and to be understood so they are ready to learn. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board this evening?
Hello, everyone. My name's Natalie Osborne. I'm from 51 Lambert Drive. And I just wanted to echo the statements that were made about social emotional learning. I'm a big believer in mindfulness for adults and kids. And the fact that this is getting incorporated into our public school system is really exciting. So thank you all so much for doing that. And keep it up. It's great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Rowland, 161 H.F. I'm sort of here with two hats. The first one is a parent and I liked what you said, Mrs. Swift, about I'm a new, my, my daughter is new to special education. And it's true that you made me feel so much part of the team and active in her planning and placement and how that's evolved. So I just, I wanted to compliment you. But really, I'm here as one of your coaches. Some of you were on the board when I came and asked if we could co-op a hockey team. And one of the main things that I didn't hear on the list of all the people involved are coaches. And I, like you, could tell so many stories coaching at the high school level. I started 12 years ago, I would tell them, leave your stuff outside. You're coming in to play hockey and you have to learn to skate and you have to learn to be aggressive and you have to, you know, do all these hockey things. And what I quickly realized was they couldn't do that if they had a parent who was very sick, if they had their own blood work that had to be done every week to make sure that their platelet level was high enough to be able to play hockey, if they had anxiety and depression that they were dealing with themselves. And I quickly realized that I had to be mindful of what these kids were bringing into the ring. And so I think it's really important as you put this program together that you include us. Because we are, you know, I, I think, I'm also a golf coach, not in the district, hockey's in, in the district. But I spent five hours with six girls on the bus, okay, in a small bus. I couldn't get out of earshot of, of the conversations that are going on. And somebody said, how do you talk to your kid about numeracy and literacy in the car? Well, there isn't, there was no numeracy and literacy going on on that bus ride. It was what happened at lunch and what happened with this girl and that guy and this thing and that thing. And they just needed me to be present, to hear it. And to get them to a place where they were ready to go play golf when we arrived on the bus. And that's not always an easy task. And I would really appreciate the skills that you're learning and you're teaching your team for me to help them be mindful. I mean, I'm working as an adult, I'm still working on that stuff myself. We can't drive down the post road without having to be mindful, right? Because how aggressive do we want to be? So it's, it's the same thing. And after this golf match, we got back on the bus and I promised them we would stop at Five Guys if we won. And we won by two strokes. So I had my phone ready. I figured we go into Five Guys, we play somewhere, we get our phones out, right? We check social media, we see where we're at. These kids still wanted to talk. Fifteen seconds. They, okay, they still, and that's, I'll end with that, because they still wanted to talk. These high school kids wanted to, they didn't, they didn't bring their phones out. They wanted to talk about the match. They wanted to talk about that lunch situation a little more. And I think it would help us as coaches if we had those wonderful skills that you guys all talked about. And to hear that you're talking about it at five years old, at six years old is fantastic. So please put this in place.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, are most of our coaches staff, Milford Public School staff members? Large majority of them?
A significant number. I don't know the breakdown per se, but I, I would say certainly more than, than less.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can say that there, there were teacher representatives who are also coaches on the committee over the summer. So there was, they were teachers, but also coaches in the district as well.
Include those who are teachers.
Right. Yes, anybody wanting to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Konstanza Kopova and I'm a parent. I have a daughter who is a junior at Farm High School. And I'm here because of Mrs. Basiano invited me. And but I also work at Yale University and am indirectly connected to the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. And I just wanted to say how very important this program is. And I contacted Mrs. Basiano last year to inquire and to suggest development of such program. I spoke with Mr. Berkowitz and they're extremely open, very supportive. They, they listened, they opened up lines of communication. They talked to me about the platform they're developing. And I, I have the ability to see and I'm familiar with what the Ruler program is because of the Center for Emotional Intelligence. And my role is, is not in the center. I work in purchasing, but I happen to be reviewing that contract. So I was able to very recently see Ruler 2, which is the next, the next stage. There will be a lot of resources that will be open, completely open to all schools to use. And it's, it's going to be a wide platform that actually you could contribute to, to them. And it's going to be a two-way street for everybody. So I'm very excited. If this is still in the works, it's not official, but I'm very excited and I'm so grateful that this is being implemented in Milford School District. And I'm also very excited that my daughter will benefit from your pilot. I heard 12th grade. So she certainly needs the help. All of them need the help. I see them, all the emotions spiraling. And as a, as a parent is one thing, it's very, very. I see them, all the emotions spiraling, and as a parent is one thing, it's very, very different when it comes from the school, and we really need that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening, the public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Call in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries you on, Miss Lake. Thank you.